Testing one, two. Check, 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 check. Check, check.
That always comes from the right.
No, you're in the wrong.
What are we doing back there?
And then it's um, oh, I'm sorry.
I know, but um, I have really.
Try my way.
This room, I never thought that this room would get so cold.
But this room gets cold.
I should.
Any of those trees that just kicked up some trees to me.
So.
Lead them around to go with me.
We just send the receiver.
I think I'm gonna leave this. Right there. I know. You were. Get this. So he started on sending, right, but look, he marked as receiving. So we have sending this. Ready?
So it says here.
Everybody good?
That we want to send this. So, sending.
Got it, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Yes, sending. Call to order of the meeting. This meeting, which is hereby called to order at seven thirty five P M., is in compliance with the notice of requirements of the law. Public notice was posted in the office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal court, the Delhi Record, and the Start Ledger on January tenth, two thousand twenty. Join me for a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an announcement.
Muy buenas noches. Al que necesita el servicio de intérprete, me sentaré en esa mesa ahí atrás a servirle.
Thank you. Mister Smith, can we have roll call, please? Present.
Here.
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 Ruiz.
Present.
Viveras.
Present.
Present. Yes. We have two presentations. Turn it over to Doctor McLaughlin.
Well, we had a very special event. I'd like to ask our athletic director if he would come forward and our head basketball coach. So it's, it's a rare occasion when a student athlete reaches a benchmark of a thousand points scored. And for those who were in attendance that evening, it was a very special moment to see Rafael Castro score those thousand points. And we wanted to take a moment, Rafael, to honor you and tell you now you were a part of the lore and tradition of Dover High School. And certainly seeing the way that you scored that was, was so impressive as well. So we'd like you to come forward and the board would like to honor you for that achievement.
Wait a second. That's important.
Maybe more important.
Yay. Congratulations.
Our second presentation, Mister Ruiz, our assistant principal at Academy Street School, was, well, accepted the task of putting together a committee to compile next year's school calendar, which the board will vote on this evening. So we asked if he would share a few remarks about the process and what the calendar consists of.
All right, well, good evening. Thank you, Doctor McLaughlin, Miss Dalapaloo, the Board of Ed. Thank you for having me tonight. First off, I want to thank the committee that I put together, consisting of several stakeholders within the Dover community, who helped me put together the calendar for next school year. Miss Marcia Stella, who's the Director of Special Services here at Dover, John Caniglio, who is the President of the Dover Education Association, Benjamin Robles, who's a parent at Academy Street School, Miss Viveras, who helped us with several things during the session. And then Mister Lee Niddles, who is the superintendent over at Mine Hill, also had a few points to assist me with when we were trying to establish a, a calendar that matched with the two townships, the two districts. We tried putting together a cohesive calendar. Essentially, what we did was we established our August thirty first as our start date next year for teachers, with a September first as a second staff day. September second would be the first day for students to report. One of the big changes that we made was we moved parent-teacher conferences for the elementary schools and the middle school from October to November, allowing for a little extra time for teachers, students, and parents to get to know each other before they meet again after the back-to-school night. That takes us all the way to, I would say, spring break, which will be April second through the ninth. And with the idea of establishing a set end of the school year and graduation for June thirty, twenty third, excuse me, we also established a Friday to Monday Memorial Day weekend. That gives us one hundred and eighty-five school days from September the second to June twenty third. In the case that the five emergency days, the five snow days aren't used, we came with the, up with the idea of giving those days back on the Memorial Day weekend, rather than move the school calendar forward or backward in June. If anybody has any questions or thoughts or concerns, you could always reach me at my school email address. I could also send you a copy of the calendar. All right? And that, that's pretty much it.
The board does have a copy of the calendar. Does any, anyone have any questions in regard to that?
One more thing to add is that the ultimate goal of the committee was to also establish a, a running calendar for subsequent years. So the idea is that we will have a two-year running calendar to look at in the future. We will be meeting again next month to establish that two-year run with the outlook of hopefully having that two-year calendar set by April.
Great planning.
Thank you, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any board member have questions, comments? Okay. We move to the public comment. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters. To ensure fair and orderly expression of such comment, each statement shall be held to a time period of three minutes. Public comments limited to items on this agenda only should be entertained for approximately thirty minutes. If you're going to be a speaker tonight, we ask that you please print your full name. The signee is at the podium, Mister Smith? It's right at the podium. If you could just please enter your full name legibly so we can accurately capture it on our minutes. We're having a hard time hearing the names when we're enacting the minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone interested to comment? On agenda items only.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm gonna write my full name. My name is Doctor Ernest Palestis, three ninety-three West Blackwell Street, Dover, New Jersey. Have some questions on the personnel agenda. There is a Gressalis on the agenda for appointment for a position. Is, is that a relative of board member?
Nope.
Okay. And then my second question on the personnel items is that there are a number of personnel appointments tonight. What I'd like to know is, were any board members endorsed by any labor organizations, any unions affiliated with the Dover Board of Education in the most recent or any prior election campaign?
Any other, any other comments, Doctor Palestis?
Well, I had a follow-up. Should I wait for that response?
Well, this is a time for public comment. It's not a time for a question-and-answer session.
I do, I do have, I have.
I paused, I paused your comment.
I do have a comment then, and my comment is, in the event, it's my belief, that in the event that a Dover Board of Education member was endorsed by a union that's affiliated with the Dover Board of Education, I would recommend that you not vote on any personnel appointments relative to that union. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Anyone else? I will close the portion of the public comment at this time. Moving to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to move on the minutes for January sixth regular session and January sixth executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Mister Miller motion to move, and who's second? Miss Nutting. I wanted to briefly thank everyone for the fixing of the human errors that were on our minutes. We understand that we all make mistakes. Thank you so much for the back and forth. Can I have roll call?
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Mister Mullin?
Yes.
Mister Nutting?
Yes.
Doctor Sanger?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
Mister Purcell?
Yes.
The very first one.
Yes.
I'm Communications. We've received two lovely contacts from Mister Franks. The Dover High School community, community wants to thank this opportunity to say thank you to our Board of Education members as January is School Board Recognition Month. The Dover Board of Education has always been a dedicated, hard-working, forward-thinking group that represents all stakeholders and supports a tremendous program of studies for our students, teachers, and administrators. We continue to move in the right direction because all of your behind-the-scenes work and reinforcing our One Dover initiatives. Thank you for all that you do for us. We would also like to congratulate our newest members, Miss Catano and Miss Viveros. We also received a lovely thank you card from Miss Cisak. Dear Doctor McLaughlin, Miss Dalapaloo, and board members, it is very much appreciated. Thank you for the beautiful clock. It meant so much to have it presented at the board meeting. I sincerely enjoyed my years with Dover and withhold so many memories close to my heart. Sincerely, Linda Cisak. Doctor McLaughlin, Superintendent's reports.
Thank you. So we begin tonight with our student representatives, who I thank so much for being here and for the work that they've done in preparing their reports. And perhaps Natalie, you could begin with that.
For North Dover Elementary School, the kinder, the kindergarteners celebrated their one-hundredth day of school, and they participated in many activities demonstrating their ability to count to the number a hundred, such as creating necklaces out of a hundred Fruit Loops, making towers with a hundred cups and more. The second grade has collected over one hundred items to donate to a local women's shelter, two hundred and eighty, to be exact. They're on track of reaching and maybe even surpassing their goal to collect a hundred items from each grade level. With this service project, the children have learned the importance of helping others and giving back to our community. In the fourth grade, students are very busy preparing for their Underground Railroad escape room. Fourth grade students will act as guides or conductors for third grade students as they try to solve puzzles. The sixth graders at North Dover Elementary School are very busy gaining academic knowledge to enhance their educational experience. The young scholars are actively researching famous African-Americans and developing keynote presentations to inform others about each person's accomplishments and impacts on society as a whole. And at East Dover Middle School, the students are very excited about this year's school play, Game of Miss, Myths. Miss James and Miss Malka will co-direct the play. The students audition for the parts on February tenth and eleventh. The play is scheduled for April twenty-third and April twenty-fourth at seven P M. East Dover will also host a health fair open to the Dover community on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, from five P M. to six thirty P M. in their gymnasium. East Dover's fifth and sixth grade students are invited to attend this year's fifth and sixth grade dance on February twenty-eighth at six thirty P M. This event is sponsored by the East Dover Campus P T A. The E D E Character Innovate is in full swing. As part of a service innovative, their sixth graders are selling Tiger Gams to benefit Eleventh Hour Rescue. So far, the students have collected in excess of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Max?
From Academy Street Elementary School, fourth grade students are currently producing their Valentine's for vets, which is meant to show appreciation for the service and sacrifice that our many veterans have given. Academy Cares would also like to recognize one of their kindergarten students. She took it upon herself to not only grow out her hair, but also cut it, donate it to a child in need suffering from cancer. In the spirit of Valentine's Day, Academy Street's social media accounts posted a very special reunion. Miss Norma Diaz, one of Academy Street's dedicated paraprofessionals, had a surprise visit. Her husband, Master Sergeant Javier Diaz, made his return from overseas in Kuwait, where he has been serving our country in the U.S. Air Force. Master Sergeant Diaz, along with the support Academy Street, surprised Miss Diaz with a special "I'm Home, Here's Return." A special thanks would like to be given to the school's community as Academy Street will be recognized by the Interfaith Food Pantry for collecting one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine pounds of food for families in need. The school's name will be added to the organization's Giving Tree mural located in their lobby. Also, over the next few months, students in the building will be participating in a core values reward and raffle program. Administrators, staff, and other students can reward children with raffle tickets for acts that reflect core values that are done. Those raffle tickets will then be placed in a grade-level box located outside the cafeteria. And once the appointed time span is up, winning names will be drawn and prizes will be issued. Currently, they are on the lookout for students and acts that best reflect their trustworthiness. And from Dover High School, the new, the new lunch P O S, or point-of-sale system, was introduced today. It started with breakfast and continued in all three lunches. Our food service provider, Pom, Pomtonian, has extra people on hand to assist us in the new system. Being honest, it was very smooth the first day. All the students are reminded to memorize their PIN number and to also take a picture of ID just in case they temporarily misplace it. As we saw. it. As we saw before, special congratulations to Rafael Castro and his thousand points in basketball, a truly remarkable milestone, especially being a junior. A new morning drop-off procedures are now in place, eliminating drop-off by the tennis courts and in the parking lot. It was a struggle at first, but the system is beginning to come together, and it's going smoothly now over, after a few revisions. The Dover PD, along with our resource officer, security, and maintenance teams, have helped in controlling the new drop-off system. Many more people are coming in earlier, which has had a tremendous impact on the flow of traffic and minimizing the number of students arriving late to school, which honestly is quite good for me as a student as well. The debate team closed their season today, uh, this year with negative team members Amber Aragon and Margaret Cassano earning third-place trophies, while the affirmative team, Tatiana Arturtua, Christopher Creoyo and Victor Creoyo's team won preliminary rounds. Christopher Creoyo was awarded Spirit of Debate at the high school. Mr. Noel and the Environmental Science Club raised a hundred-and-twenty-six dollars from their bake sale that will be donated to the Wires Australian Wildlife Reserve Organization to help wildfire, to help wildlife affected by the bushfires. The scholarships for seniors is up in the guidance office and is ready for students to apply. Seniors are taking full advantage of this opportunity to receive as much financial help as they can to further academic goals. And last but not least, both the high school band and cheerleaders performed at the Academy Street to help roll out their core values. This was a great service learning opportunity and potential promising practice for Dover High School.
Thank you.
Thank you to both of you so much. You make my report a little bit harder after that. Good evening. On Friday, the fourteenth, the school district conducted a full-day professional day experience for all of our staff. Ms. Dalapaloo will provide further details in her report concerning the full array of training that took place. Among Friday's offerings, all teaching staff were provided with training from Dr. Elizabeth Willem. Dr. Willem presented the staff with data from New Jersey Districts and National Longitudinal Data that indicated the effectiveness of dual-language programming and its promise to eliminate and indeed surpass the achievement gap. The district is now poised to begin its Bilingual C for All initiative. Beginning with next year's incoming kindergarten class and thereafter, an increased grade level per year, all students will receive instruction in both English and Spanish with the goal of students who can learn, speak, write, and read fluently in two languages. At the same time, the district seeks to bolster its existing bilingual programming by adopting a one-way dual-language model for grades one to six. This is a challenging endeavor, but one that holds tremendous promise for our students. We will continue to update the board and our community as we progress in this critically important work. As members of the community are aware from weekly updates and prior announcements and from our student report, procedures, morning drop-off procedures at Dover High School have been an area of focus due to the random drop-off points and undirected student pedestrian traffic that had poised multiple dangers for our students. The morning drop-off at the high school improved significantly, as you heard, by the end of last week, and there are now clearly understood lanes of traffic for those who are parking and for those who are dropping off. District personnel have been deployed for morning drop-off to provide active monitoring and supply directions to morning drivers. Mr. Franks has also indicated that there are a significant number of drop-offs occurring up to ten minutes earlier than previously, and as, as we heard, that should lessen our lateness issues at the high school, which has been a concern to date. We thank Mr. Franks and his team for their considerable efforts on behalf of our students' safety, and we also extend our thanks to parents for their understanding and cooperation in the beginning days of this new process. In a similar vein, we continue to employ safety procedures for visitors to our schools. A new camera phone system has been deployed at the high school, and similar systems are in the process of installation at our other schools. Recommendations from school safety specialists always begin with the protocol that is established that allow visitors into schools. A great deal of school tragedies began with the permitted entrance of visitors that had no pre-planned reasons for a school visit. As noted in our Friday presentation to the staff, the most common phrase offered after a tragic event is, "We never thought this could happen here." With that in mind, we are doing everything in our ability to maintain schools that place the safety of students as our greatest priority. We realize that this poses inconveniences and is a change for many who had ready access to our schools in the past, and your understanding and the support are truly appreciated on behalf of our students. An acting principal for East Dover, Dover Middle School, Ms. Aretha Dooley-Malloy is on tonight's agenda, and she is scheduled to begin work tomorrow, Wednesday. We are happy to have a veteran school leader join us, along with our assistant principals, Ms. Carlton and Mr. McCauley, to support our students and our teachers. The process for a permanent principal selection is scheduled for March with an anticipated recommendation to the Board of Ed no later than our April Board of Ed meeting. I'm extremely happy to announce that earlier today, we completed the closing for the Belmont Avenue Administrative Building. As noted many times this year, the relocation of administrative offices will free up much-needed space for classrooms encompassing North Dover Elementary, East Dover, and Dover High Schools. It's important to note that, as we have reflected on the funding for this endeavor, that all monies for this are coming from our capital reserve. The district has slightly over seven million dollars, as you heard in our audit report, in capital reserve. That money has not been touched for a number of years. Our district needs space. Our district needs improvements in terms of our infrastructure, our technology infrastructure, and although we do not plan to exhaust the capital reserve, we certainly plan to utilize it because that's its purpose. So, I wanted to celebrate with you tonight because I think it's a great movement in this direction. It's certainly not the end of our challenges for space. We will need to come back to the board and make recommendations for future planning as our district continues to expand and grow. Activities towards the move will begin in earnest, starting probably tomorrow, so that instructional spaces are ready for September 2020, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Palestis. Ms. Dalapaloo?
Good evening. My report has been shortened. That's what happens when you go forth. So, as Dr. McLaughlin said, on Friday, we had a professional development day where all staff participated in various trainings. I will talk about some of those this evening. Kevin Bird, a consultant from the I Love You Guys Foundation, presented to all staff on the standard response protocol. In addition to the safety training, we also provided paraprofessionals training on verbal de-escalation techniques. That training was provided through the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education. Our security guards also participated in restraint training provided by Handle With Care. In addition, the social studies department from the middle school and the high school participated in their continued in-depth study of the events of nine eleven through Gilder Lerman. A community health fair has been planned and will take place on February twenty-seventh, 2020, from five o'clock to six-thirty p.m. in the Dover Middle School Gymnasium. The goal of the health fair is to provide all residents within the Dover School Community access to vendors from the health field that offer services available to them. These services are designed to promote positive lifestyle habits and knowledge for lifelong health. It is our belief and expectation that this community outreach event, in connection with the assistance of local businesses and vendors, will help to drive awareness within our community and encourage all community members to strive for more healthy and active living. The community health fair organizers are Ms. Kathleen Renke, Ms. Kelsey Principay, and Mr. Jeff Hoyt, along with the support of Mr. Sean Bullock, their supervisor. Last week, I released the first Bright Bite survey to our staff, and we are quickly collecting data on our digital environment and our technology use from the staff's perspective. On Monday, February twenty-fourth, the survey will be released to parents and also to students in third grade through twelfth grade. All surveys will be completed by March sixth, and this will allow the Professional Learning Committee, known as DIAC, to review the results and make recommendations for continued professional learning for the 2021 school year. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Dalapaloo. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you very much. I have the normal monthly list of bills, payroll, the budget transfers, and the cafeteria report. I have two donations for scholarships. We have, we're accepting a grant to, from the New Jersey National School program for twenty-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars as part of renovating that serving line down here that's been there since sixty-four. We're already doing that, you know, with the audit to replace that. I did two RFPs, request for proposals, and one of them was for banking services, and Valley National Bank was the best proposal. I'm recommending that. The second RFP was for architectural, architect of record, and I'm recommending DeCara Rubino. The, submitting the ESEA report because we're getting, I'm doing an RFP for auditor, which I will be presenting to you next month at your public meeting. In the past, we had done a resolution to award the auditing services for next year, so we're going to rescind that so we can start out fresh with whoever wins the RFP. And then new software system for the business office and payroll services. And then a turnkey technology agreement in the amount of six-hundred-nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars for technology infrastructure upgrades.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Sainer, do you want to take that one?
Sure. I move that the board acknowledges the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report as provided.
Second.
Have a second? You motion, you second. You got it? Dr. Sainer? Any comments, questions from the board? Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveras?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. Administrator's approval. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent of Schools' HIV incidence report?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
She moved it. I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Smith, did you get that? Yes. Hold on a second. Keep going. One more. Item A, yes. I believe, and- Okay. Who moved the motion?
I can move the motion.
Ms. Nutting moved, and Ms. Mullin seconded. No comments, no questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveras?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes.
And I'd just like to note for the record that in executive session, the HIP cases listed on the agenda, EDE five, DHS nine, DHS ten, DMS eight, DMS nine, DMS ten, and NDE three were all discussed, and those will be voted on at our next Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve field trips? Ask for the attached list?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller? Motioned, and Ms. Nutting second. Any comments, questions?
Is this just on the field, or do you want to get one through five?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is B, one through five.
Yes.
Same?
One through five.
One through five?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveras?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. I would like to ask for a motion to table the personnel to the end of the agenda. We may need to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we move that we postpone personnel until the end of the agenda.
A second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion? Voice voiled for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We can move on to, skip over to page seven, negotiations. Do we have any updates?
We're in the process of working with the, if you don't mind, I-
Please.
With the Administrators Association, we're trying to agree on a date. It looks like we'll be meeting with them again in early March.
Thank you, Mr. Krueg. I believe, I don't know who the chair is of curriculum and co-curriculum. Did, was that not made a decision, correct? And Ms. Nutting, your reporting?
I'll give the report for the curriculum and co-curriculum. At this point in time, we have not established a chair. We wanted to have all the parties there to make that decision. Just to give you a heads up, we had our mock school board walkthrough looking at our preschool curriculum. Ms. Dalapaloo has been working very hard, looking at our curriculum across the board with everything going on. This, she is working on a writing for the summer of 2020, and she has also had made a trip to the Mine Hill School to talk to them about their math curriculum and to see what curriculums they're using versus the ones that we are using in our school system. This way, when we do have the children transition altogether, that we're on the same page and we're all working together, which I think is a very good thing. I would like to make a motion on the board to approve the following resolutions for the 2019-2020 school year as listed below from one to five, oh, one to six.
Second one.
Oh, eight, I'm sorry.
Second.
Ms. Nutting motioned, and Ms. Mullin second. Any questions, discussions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveras?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes.
Community relations, may we have an update, please?
Yes. We had our meeting on February fourth, and I was elected the chairman of the Community Relations Committee. Ms. Vavaro's have reached out to Victory Gardens to let them know that the committee exists, that if we have a forum to talk with some of the parents of Victory Gardens, we would certainly meet with them. I've sent an email to Mayor Blackman, also indicating the same thing, that if there are any issues would come up and they would like to discuss with us, we would certainly be available. I had talked to Ms. Mars from Mine Hill, and we're going to set up a meeting with both Community Relations Committees. Ms. Palestis and I will be meeting with the Special Education Parent Association on March fifth at seven o'clock at Academy Street. I did have a question from the community, just putting that out there, wondering what the process was for the grant with CCM, the selection process for those that would receive some of the funds that were given to our organization for students to go to county college. So, I don't know if there's some presentation at some point for parents to know how they can apply, you know, to receive some of those funds for their students. And I think that's it for right now.
Well, sorry. Go ahead.
Can I just respond to that? So, I was, I've attended the Dover Partnership Meeting at CCM a couple of weeks ago, and they are in the process of putting together a selection process, and that's going to be the focus of our next meeting, which I think is due to take place in the next couple of weeks. So, I should be able to provide an update on that.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you. Ms. Mullin?
Yes, I attended the SEPA meeting on January twenty-third, and what an enthusiastic group of parents working together, and they had two representatives from SPAN presenting information and possibility going for a health grant and what resources they offer and trainings, and they're pulling their organization together with officers, and it's, it's a good, positive group of people.
And I attended the Mine Hill Board of Ed meeting, and I was lucky enough to have the presentation on the purchase process, which was really good. You know, it was good, it was very pertinent to being on the finance committee as a board member, and it was a very comprehensive and entertaining report. And they went over their finances, and Ms. Morris presented all of the activities we're doing in Dover, inviting, you know, to the spaghetti dinner. It's a good collaboration. I really felt the positive energy between the two boards. So that was a very positive meeting, so I was glad to be there.
And also attended the Dover High School Band spaghetti dinner fundraiser, which was attended by a lot of people. It was a great event. Kids did a great job in serving and enjoyed that, especially having some of my scouts wait on me at my table, so it was good.
Good role switches, huh? I wanted to mention the Community Relations is a new, we're doing it in a new way this year, so just make sure you give us feedback on how it's working, what's not working, if, you know, tweaks need to be made, I think that's important.
One of the things I'm putting together is a template for each of the members, so that, since we're splitting up and going to different places, they'll put everything on the template, send it to me, and then all I have to do is just read each thing.
Perfect.
So that's what we're going to do going forward.
Great, thank you. Policies. Ms. Viveros?
We met on February eleventh, and our next meeting is March tenth. I wanted to make it public that now available on the district's website are all of our policies. They can be accessed by a phrase or a topic search.
Yay!
Your job easier.
Item A, I just want to discuss what we went over before we make any motions. Policy five-five-one-nine, this is dating violence at the school. This was just up for review, no changes. Policy five-five-two-zero, disorder and demonstration. Within the regulation portion of this, we will replace the wording "student government" to "student council." No other changes. The actual policy will remain the same, it's just up for review. Policy number five-five-three-zero, substance abuse. No changes are required, again, just up for review. And I'm, I move that we approve policy number five-five-one-nine, five-five-two-zero, and five-five-three-zero.
Second.
I have a
Mr. Smith, you got the second? Motion by Ms. Viveros, and second by Mr. Miller. Thank you. Discussion, comments? Ms. Mullin?
I have a question on the dating. Will that date edited be changed, or will it just stay the same? Because there was no major changes, but
There's no changes at all, just, it will just be the adoption day. Any, any of the, as you know, the five thousand policies, we are reviewing any that are over five years old.
Right.
Yeah.
But should there be another date on there saying it was reviewed?
Yes, so after this board meeting, the date will be placed there.
Okay, good, thanks.
Anything else on that policy? I had a question regarding, in the second paragraph, the last sentence of that policy, it states that a written report will be provided to the principal no later than one day after the incident, meaning the dating violence or anything of that sort, I imagine. Is this a business day or a calendar day post the incident occurrence? Do we know that?
That would be a school day.
It would be a school day. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Do we have roll call, please?
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveros?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. That is the, require one reading, right? Do we, would we, the following points require one reading? Perfect, okay. So can you move to B?
Okay. Moving on to the next items, these are revisions which will require two readings. Policy zero-one-five-two, which is board officers. We would like to add in no board member shall serve as duly-elected president of the board for more than two consecutive terms, i.e., the time between the annual reorganization meeting in each of three years. A term is defined as one calendar year. Policy one-six-four-two, earned sick leave. This policy pertains to substitutes and summer help. It is not for our regular employed staff. For every thirty hours worked, an employee is eligible to accrue sick leave. These hours turn into days, and the benchmark is one hundred and twenty days before being able to use the days. Also, item five-one-four-five-point-five, photographs of students. This item was inserted into policy nine-one-two-zero, referenced in policy five-seven-seven-zero. Five, policy five-seven-seven-zero is student right of privacy. And at this time, we would also like to bring to everyone's attention, Mr. Bullock now has our school sporting events on a live broadcast, so we ask that paragraph four and five are taken into consideration and understood. Policy five-five-three-three, student smoking. We're looking into changing some wording within this procedure, but nothing has been finalized. And I motion that we pass policy zero-one-five-two, one-six-four-two, five-one-four-five-point-five, and five-five-three-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just the thinking of the, because when you vote for, I wasn't at the meeting since I had the plague, so I did not come to that meeting.
Priorities.
Yes. When you vote on a president, it's one year at a time. What was the thinking? I mean, I know there was discussion about that at a prior meeting, but I wasn't sure what was the final discussion on why we wanted to put that in there? That you can't be president more than two years in a row?
I'm not exactly sure what the policy committee's plan was on this.
Go ahead, policy?
I'm new, so I don't know everything. I believe it's for leadership reasons. We would like to rotate the board members and not have someone sit there for more than a two-year term, but other people could chime in if that's
Of course.
Okay.
I can speak to that. We had, many of us have attended leadership training, NJ SBA Leadership Training, Morris County School Board Association Leadership Training, and they recommend shared leadership. And so the idea would be that we would rotate with no one person sitting in that seat for
No more than two years in a row?
Right. And then there would be, the policy also calls for a one-year, at least a full year break before you could be reelected for a third, I guess.
For a second term.
A second term, yes.
Okay. All right.
Good question. Anyone else?
Where can these policies be accessed?
Good, good question.
It's a great question. As mentioned before, we have a new search engine on our policy site, so under the Board of Education tab on the website, you can look for the existing policies there, and then right underneath that listing, there's a category called Policies Under Consideration. So these policies that are there for first reading are listed with the changes in bold and with any language that's being eliminated with a strike through.
Thank you.
No further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveros?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. Item C?
And last but not least, policy number five-one-four-zero, adult rights. We are looking to abolish this policy. We would like to remove this policy as it is a complex issue, and we obtain legal advice on it when necessary, as not every child is emancipated at eighteen years old. I move that we approve policy one, five-one-four-zero to be abolished.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveros?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. Finance and facility, please. Dr. Sainer?
Hi, we met on February eleventh. We will meet again on March third. Mr. Smith covered many of the items in the finance portion in his report. We did receive updates on some ongoing projects in the district such as electrical work and roof repairs at Academy Street, some changes to the Academy Street Library to allow for an extra classroom, as well as some, a little bit of planning for budget season and some priorities that we'd like to accomplish in the next year's budget. In terms of facilities, there were no incidences of vandalism in the last month. And therefore, and I would like to acknowledge again, we did receive some contributions to our scholarship fund, which is always very much appreciated. So I would move that we would accept, approve, or adopt items A one through thirteen.
Second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Mullin?
Yes. I have a question about the turnkey technologies. I know it's a big need, and we have the money there. Will some of that money be reimbursed through grants?
Yeah, that's through our E-rate funding.
Most of it, or?
Eighty percent? About eighty percent. Yeah, eighty to eighty-five percent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a few questions, Mr. Smith. I wanted to, or for you as well. Would you expand a little bit on the services that we are receiving from Sufu Health Center? I know that there is on our detailed check register, there's charges for two thousand five hundred, I believe, three or four charges. Would you expand on that, please?
Yes, it's twenty-five hundred dollars per month of Sufi, and they do all the physicals for new employees, the Nantou tests, they're under contract for us.
Perfect, thank you. I also wanted to find out about, we have a payment of two thousand three hundred sixty-four and fifteen cents to J.A. Oster. Could you expand on what legal services we're covering with this expenditure?
That was a special ed case.
Okay.
He's our true, yeah. He's our true. That's the residency officer?
Right. The investigator we had, he came into private session.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And what kind of professional services did we utilize from Kelly and Consulting, which is a thousand dollars for, thousand forty?
That's ABA services for
ABA, okay. It just was not identified, thank you. And one more, regarding the Dover management fee calculation, in the December nineteen report, is this a, the document, we, the auditors talked about a plan, right, a remediation plan. Is this document related to that in regards to what we were missing from the food department? No? Okay, it's a new, it was new for me, so that's why I was wondering what we got it. There was something outlined there saying that we are excluding SMP from the less revenue in that report. Could you tell us what SMP is?
State milk programs.
State?
State milk program.
State milk program, okay, so that's why it's excluded.
We give milk out to the preschools, we get the state
So it excluded, got it. And what benefits, could you tell us a little bit on the benefits of the New Jersey School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant Agreement?
Yes, because the whole thing to replace that line is with two refrigerators that hold cold drinks on either side, so the whole line was sixty-seven thousand, so now we're saved by twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
Perfect, thank you for your patience.
Ms. Grisales?
Dr. Sainer?
I had one question from the check register there. This is in regards to EI associates. There was a void for seven thousand dollars approximately, and then a new charge for eighteen thousand dollars. Could you explain these charges, what they were used for, and then their relation to our newly retained architectural firm?
The, they, both invoices had to do with the renovation of the home. And so we had a partial payment, and then they canceled it and gave them the full payment, because he had never submitted a payment for the initial one.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, can I ask you to go closer to the microphone? Sorry, the, the public is mentioning me, pointing to their ears. Thank you. Do I have roll call, please?
Ms. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nutting?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Viveros?
Yes.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes. Old business?
I just have one thing, I just wanted to mention that I had talked to Dr. McLaughlin about a walkthrough of the Belmont Street property, and now that we've closed, I just wanted to mention it to the whole board that I had asked, you know, that we do have a walkthrough so we can see the building that we're purchased.
I think what we'll do is I'll, I'll offer a couple of dates and ask people to indicate which ones they want. That way, we'll avoid a quorum and a, and an announcement of our walkthrough, and, you know, we'll offer enough dates that, that, you know, you could take advantage of that.
Perfect, thank you.
And for old business, I also, a couple of our board members, we attended a class on a Saturday morning, equality from the boardroom to the classroom, and it was, it was basically about what we have to offer for our students and all different aspects, whether everybody has a learning difference, learning style that you want to address, that you come to their level and have those accommodations for them.
Perfect. I wanted to thank Dr. Sainer for saving the environment and carpooling and driving us and being our chauffeur. So, Dr. Sainer, Ms. Nutting, Ms. Viveros also attending, so thank you. Any other old business?
I have old business that I would like to go to the East Dover Middle School events. I think Ms. Mullin had them, and at the time, I was with Academy Street only for community, and I just wanted to bring that up, that I'll be attending those as well if she needs help.
For the school representations? Okay.
I think I'm at North Dover, but I think we switched that around. I think we switched it around.
Sure, I think as long as we're all, we're all there, yes.
It's all good.
Anyone else? Are you going to report on something?
I have new business.
New business, I have one old business. On the sixteenth of January, Ms. Mullin, Ms. Reese, Dr. Sainer, Mr. Miller, and myself attended the Morris County School Boards Association Foundation for Success, which was actually hosted here in our district at a high school. We all attended the different breakout sessions covering fundamentals of school finance, fundamental of student achievement, and advancement in school law. So thank you for attending. Thank you. New business?
I have new business.
Dr. Sainer?
Dover High School will be hosting the first-ever Morris County School Board Association Leadership Meeting. This was in response to an idea by Ms. Grisales that all of the county presidents and vice presidents meet to discuss issues pertinent to their role in board leadership. So we were sent a survey. I have no idea yet what we're going to be discussing. We haven't had the results of those, but Dover was gracious enough to host, and that is happening this Thursday night.
And a little update to that, there may be, we're trying to plan for breakouts for new board members, and Kinnalon, I believe, district as well as another district are interested in sending new board members to kind of network with each other. Okay, thank you. So I move now for a public comment on any agenda items or all.
Or non-agenda.
Or non-agenda, just please make sure that you write your name so that we know exactly who you are and we can document you accurately.
How's that?
Can you all hear me?
Diane Morris, Mine Hill Board of Education. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. McLaughlin for scheduling a meeting with our community and parents in your tour of greeting the community out there. So I see that Mr. Nittle and you are hosting on March second, so I really appreciate the partnerships that we're forging and that that continues. They're not one-shot deals. I know that our, I heard mention about the math program with, with our curriculum and your curriculum, so there's a lot of, of collaboration, I think the word is I'm looking So there's a lot of, of collaboration, I think the word is I'm looking for, going on, so I really appreciate that. Thank you. So on another note, I had a parent come to me and complain about the vaping in the girls' room in the high school. Now, I directed that parent to follow a chain of command and, and bring it to the high school principal and so forth and so on. But I was wondering, I read an article in the paper recently, I think it was Biscataway is putting vaping detectors in the lavatories. And I'm wondering whether or not Dover is considering doing that to, to reduce those issues for those students that don't vape. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wants to comment?
Hello again. You know, at the last few minute, few meetings, I've been talking about the total lack of transparency that takes place on this Board of Education.
I appreciate you already spoke, Dr. Palestis, but could you, for the record, could you, I paused the thing.
Dr. Ernest Palestis, three ninety-three West Blackwell Street. But I've raised concerns about transparency. I'm sitting here tonight and I earlier raised just one simple question or made a statement in regards to unions, personnel motions, and now suddenly the board's going into closed session or waiting. You need to address this issue of a lack of transparency. And I want you to know that this is just not a slogan. I've done some research. What I think is happening with this Board of Education, actually what I know is happening, is that you're making decisions before you ever get to this table. I'll say that again. You're making decisions before you ever get to this public table. Recently, I requested copies of Board of Ed emails going back to January twenty nineteen and ending in January twenty twenty. This board is being governed behind the scenes by email, not by what the public says, but what people say secretly. And what's even worse than that is your emails are not shared even with each other, even copies that say do not reply. Let me give you an example. Your current president and current vice president of the board, your president of the board, sent and received in one year, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five emails. One thousand three hundred eighty-five emails. That's staggering. That's keeping information from the public. It's keeping information from the staff. It goes beyond the Open Public Meetings Act. I believe it's a violation of the law. I believe it's a violation of your code of ethics. Current vice president of the board, five hundred eighty-seven emails. Now, what's worse than that?
I paused it again, you have about a minute to go.
Thank you so much. What's worse than that is not only is the public being left out of the decision-making process, but the board members seated at this table are being left out. You board members are not getting all the information because there's a monopoly taking place of emails. Just to give you real quickly, Mrs. Mullin, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Phillips and Mrs. Nutting, last year, each, one thousand emails were not shared with them. How can you be a Board of Education member and not know what's going on? People don't send you emails on your own board. That's wrong. That is wrong. You need to take a look at yourself and stop this mystique and this big lie that you have going on that this is the Board of Education of transparency. You're not transparent. You are not transparent. You're the Board of Ed of secrecy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions? Well, not questions, comments.
Fernando Barrios, twelve Christopher Street. I want to congratulate the Castro family that's in the back. Also Coach Billy O'Conners for running a successful basketball team. Also the Board of Ed for acknowledging students like this. It definitely motivates, motivates them to do good. Also, I have a couple of concerns from citizens around Dover. It's on my phone. For the payment of the school lunches, parents are having issues on paying these lunches. I don't know what type of payment options the parents have. I don't know if it's cash or check or what is it, but they want to see something electronically that they can go on the website and see and monitor the school lunches and either make a payment through a credit card or whatnot, something more, you know, internet-friendly or whatnot, other than the old-fashioned style. And that's it.
Anyone else?
Hi, everyone, my name is Maria Chacon. I live in eighty-two A East Blackwell Street, Dover, New Jersey. I just wanted to speak briefly on my concerns as a parent. I have a child who's in fifth grade, she goes to Academy Street School. I think that we have the best, the best principal, Mr. Marion. And I wish that the school would continue on to eighth grade because of the things that I have heard that are happening in East Dover with the vaping, walking and drunk, bullying because you look different. That for me is a very big concern. I have one year to make sure that I see something changing or that we talk about it more, that diversity and inclusion is brought up in schools. I also had a parent who told me that one of the children brought up the fact that they don't see the principal around and they told them to not talk about it, that the VP is working with other teachers. I'm not sure if we have a principal in East Dover, if anybody here could clarify that. And also, how, what are we doing with, with depression in schools? Are we inviting anybody like the NAMI organization who, who I believe come here to, who could come here to speak for free? For grammar schools, the middle school and high school, I think it's very important that we have administration, especially the teachers that spend half of the day with our children, that they could pick up signs that there's something wrong with their kid before we get to the suicide or cutting or anything like that. I would appreciate some feedback on that. And also, other parents have talked about Mallory's Army, which is a group formed by a mother from Randolph who lost her child because of bullying by suicide. So if somebody could come and talk about that, I would appreciate it. I also wanted to talk to Scott Miller about the hockey. I brought it up last year and you said you're working on it.
I paused the clock, I just want to let you know you have about a minute to go.
Okay, so hockey, I wanted, different sports brought up, hockey, swimming and tennis. So where are we with that? I was led on that something was going to happen, but I haven't heard a word.
And just one final thing, please direct your comments to the board.
Okay, sorry, so the whole board, hockey, but I think Scott was leading the event on that. And I, and I just have one more thing. On the comment of, and I am so sorry to do this, but on the comment of Mr. Palestis that came here, I, I, you know, this is very heartbreaking to me to see that when we did a transition with the president, I have seen a lot of hostility coming to question the board ever since the change from president to president happened that I didn't see before. That for me as a parent and as a Dover citizen is concerning to me. I don't want you guys to be tainted for, you know, things that are happening behind scenes, but that's it. And I hope that you could answer on the, on the sports, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for signing in, everyone.
Okay, good evening. John Caniglio, twenty-four Taylor Town Road, Monville. I just had a couple of points here. The first was, we, we discussed the calendar in the beginning of this meeting here for this upcoming school year. And just two points on the calendar. If, if at all possible, could we get maybe an icon on the website in the top right-hand corner where the rest of those icons are? Just that would say like calendar and then people could click on the, on the icon and it would take them right to the calendar instead of searching through the whole website trying to find it. I would just make life a little bit easier when it's right on the main page there. And I think the calendar is something that a lot of parents and staff kind of look at quite frequently. So if that's possible, I think that would, you know, we'd appreciate that. The second thing with the, in regards to the calendar, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but over the years, there's always been a lot of questions as to if we don't use all of our snow days or we use too many snow days, like what's going to happen to the rest of the year. And it's always kind of like a question and nobody has an answer. And then we get an answer, but it's very, very late in the year. So I was just wondering if at all possible, if we can add that to the bottom of the calendar saying something like, if we use one snow day or if we have, you know, one give-back day, we will give back this date, you know, June first. If we have two give-back days, we'll give back June first and June second, just so people can kind of plan, parents can plan. And just so everybody kind of knows what's happening instead of guessing as we go on throughout the course of the year. And then just lastly, as far as the, the dual language learning, which Dr. McLaughlin mentioned earlier this evening, just a, just a quick question on that, if you can talk about that. Just, I'm thinking maybe like five, six years down the, down the road here where this program would have been in effect for five or six years. If a new family comes into Dover, an English-speaking family, what type of support would that student be given if he is put into a classroom where they speak solely Spanish? And kind of the opposite as well, a Spanish-speaking family is moving into Dover as like a third grader. You know, what kind of support would that student be given being placed in, in a classroom that is, is, you know, predominantly English-speaking? So just.
You have about one, I know you said it's your last one, but you have about one minute.
All right, thank you. So just a question on that, how about how they would be supported for both of those situations? And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would close the portion of the public comment at this time. I move that, I ask for a motion to move into executive session as we will be. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, I could, just a few items that I can respond to that were brought up in the public comment.
In regard to the vaping devices, there are a number of districts that are piloting the, a vaping detector. There is some mixed feedback in regard to how effective they are at this point, so we are evaluating those. There was a recent, I think a, a recent article in one of the school board updates in regard to some of the districts that are using them. So certainly we're looking at any tools that can help us. We want to make, also want to make sure that if, if we put that out there, that these are effective tools that we, we truly believe that they are. The other item that was referenced was can parents have a updated system for payment for cafeteria? Well, that's actually exactly what we started today at the high school. The POS system allows for credit card payments and electronic monitoring by parents for their children's lunch program. So we started it today at the high school and we will be phasing it in over the next several weeks, one school at a time. We want to make sure that it's employed correctly and thoroughly. We did send a letter home to parents, but we'll continue to make them aware of this upgrade to our cafeteria service. In regard to principal at East Dover, I did mention earlier in my report that we do have an acting principal who will see us through to the end of the school year. But we have a, currently, we are beginning the process for the selection of a permanent principal who will be appointed effective July first. And we anticipate that that selection will be made at the April board meeting. And then in regard to dual language, one of the items that Dr. Willen presented, that was a question that actually came up in the training with the elementary teachers. She talked about a strain, a strain that would run alongside dual language for students who came in basically at, at an upper grade level or after the progress of dual language had been made. So we'll certainly, those are all parts of the program that will be incorporated as, as we move along. So I just had some quick feedback in regard to that. And I also, I think it was mentioned by Mr. Ruiz earlier too in regard to the calendar, that he indicated those days would be given back if there are remaining snow days at, around the, either side of the Memorial Day weekend. We do plan to delineate that at the bottom of the calendar.
The board president also asked me to just clarify that occasionally people will ask specific questions about personnel, about specific, you know, items of personnel. But we just want the public to understand that personnel matters are definitely, generally confidential in nature. So there, there are some situations where the board may just not be in a position where it can comment on specific personnel items.
Thank you.
So now, we ask for a motion to move into executive session. Matters for attorney-client privilege. We will be there probably about ten, fifteen minutes at most. When we come back, we will be taking action once we return.
I move that we move into executive session for ten or fifteen minutes for matters of attorney-client privilege.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we will be back.